I literally took a three-hour nap on Wednesday. Like, I have a nap. I was like, I can't believe I just slept for three hours. So, John Hurdon, Jim Hurdon? I don't know. What do I need to... What's the situation? Okay. Yeah. On the tickets? No. Yes. Yeah.
But they're wrong.
Yep. Okay. Oh, right. Oh, yep. Okay. Okay. Yep. We'll get it rolling. I brought Ellen with me just so you could see what it's like on a pretty light night. He is the new Assistant Traffic Engineer. I'm so happy to have him.
Yes.
So, all right. Cool. Thanks.
I don't think they're going to...
I realized that you probably were talking about something. Let's talk about that. You didn't need me in here with my face in here.
How are you?
Good. You guys didn't need me here for this. For that out-of-state travel?
What is it for?
I didn't think so.
What did you want, just training?
Everybody, please rise. Dear God, as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We'll now do the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll? Counsel, Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Malanazo.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counsel Cirillo.
Counsel Conway.
Here.
Counsel Elliott.
Here.
Counsel Kennedy.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Eight present. All right. Next, we have the minutes of the City Council meeting of October 29th and the special meeting ordered this interview selection October 30th for acceptance. I need a motion to accept the place in file by Senator Kennedy and Counselor Conway.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Yes.
So, is there an update on our pick? What was the final? Or what's happening?
She has said she would accept the position and will be having a negotiation for her salary this Wednesday or Thursday. Wait for a date from her.
Okay. And then, is there a start date or that'll be negotiated with the salary?
Yes. There was a... Sorry. She had a planned vacation for the end of December, I believe. That's been planned for a long time, and so we'll have to deal with that also.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
She apologized for not bringing it up at the interview process.
Yeah, that's fine. Those things happen. Sure. Thank you.
No, it's something that said, "It's been planned so long." I mean, she said she was very upset that she didn't...
I'll fill in.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we have communications from the City Manager. We have motion response. Motion response for update on Riverwalk. We also have a speaker. But Madam Manager, do you want to...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. This is an update to the council regarding the motion having to do with the Riverwalk. This was filed by Counsel Cirillo during the summer. There's been activity and meetings that have taken place. We held off filing this with the council to afford Counsel Cirillo to be here, but there are things continuing to happen, and I just wanted to let the council know what's happening out there as well as the residents. So, and Diane Trad is here to speak to it. But in short, there was a meeting of about 20 people, people from DPW, people from the police, people from my office, people from the Health Department, and so on. And it was requested to do a walk out in that area along the river behind Little Asher Park in the area of UMass Lowell. UMass Lowell participated in the walk as well. And the whole idea to do it in the evening or at night was to be able to assess the lighting situation in the darkness. And so, there were a number of things evaluated, not just the lighting and the conditions, but also the conditions of the walkways and so forth. So, the... So, Diane Trad and Chris Hayes prepared the report. As I said, this goes through a number of areas that were looked at that evening and have been worked on since. Lighting along the way, the suggestions to have lit bollards, decorative lighting, removing of vegetation, repairing of some of the walks and some of the... both the wooden and cement walkways, and then some... and restoring benches that were in disrepair. So, Chris, I don't know whether you want to speak to this, or Diane, either. But in short, we've been working closely with the neighborhood group out there who have been very supportive and participating in pointing out areas and trying to find better ways to make it safer and more, you know, livable for everybody down in that neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. I just wanted to add that a number of residents also joined us on that walk-through, provided really invaluable information in terms of both what they saw going on on the Riverwalk, their preferences, kind of identifying some of the problem areas. So, we're really lucky to have such engaged citizens. And I also wanted to mention that we've been working very well with the Commissioner Snow in terms of scheduling small repairs. And, you know, it takes a while, so we do have the benches already repaired with some slats missing that were replaced. We have had the wooden walkways repaired with some planks basically repaired. Some of the masonry's been repaired, and we'll be continuing to do that in coordination with DPW and with UMass Lowell for the sections that UMass Lowell owns. Then, there's a number of other elements that the report mentions, and those are more items that we are going to be assessing with the Lowell Historic and the National Park and all the different stakeholders to kind of assess their feasibility, look for funding. So, those are some of the bigger things, like adding, brightening the lights, doing the decorative light, the lit bollards. Those are much more discussions that are being had, looking forward to the coming year.
Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to this gentleman. Did you notify anybody at 52 Lawrence Drive, the condo units that abut the Riverwalk?
That's Renaissance on the River. Is that correct, I believe? Okay. Yes. Yes, we did.
Because those are the very people that had the concern. So, did any of those people join you on the Riverwalk?
We did.
Oh. And so, everything that you sent us, you sent them information?
Yes, we will be sending...
You will be? You did not, but you will be?
We... Yes, we collected the email. Let me start from the beginning. We did notify all of the abutters, which includes Renaissance on the River, Boot Mills, Massachusetts Mills, River Place Towers, and the Lowell Downtown Neighborhood Association. And we got a number of residents, not just from Renaissance on the River, but from some of those other apartment buildings as well. And we made sure to get everybody's email address. We have not sent out the notes yet because we wanted to put those to the council first.
Well, that's good because these are the people that are concerned about it. So, to us to get it is nice, but for these people and all that you mentioned, they should be aware of what we're doing to help out here. So, thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll get that out.
Yeah. And a number of the residents did go on the walk that evening and were instructive to the city departments as well as the university. It was a cooperative effort. And, you know, there's some short-term things that have been done. The police also were out there and have been out there participating. There are a number of issues in terms of, you know, police as well as the homelessness situation. So, all of those things are being worked on and working closely with the neighborhood. And I think you have a new neighborhood group that meets on a regular basis. I hear it's a robust fun group that meets. Is that true? Yeah. So... But we wanted to make sure the council is aware of what's going on in working with this neighborhood and what we plan going forward. Some of the things we will have to assess, I think, some of the suggestions about having decorative lighting in places to make it, you know, more aesthetically pleasing, we're looking at that, as well as the key points that would make it not only feel safer but be safer with the lighting down there and encourage more people to be down there even in the evenings. So, we're working on it, and I just... Because it's been going on since the summer, I just wanted to let the council know that that has been happening.
Yep. Thank you.
We have a registered speaker, I believe. Joe Radwich.
That's me. From Renaissance on the River. And so...
Please give your name and address.
This is Joe Radwich from 35 Riverwalk Way, condo 108, Renaissance on the River. And we basically came down, just wanted to do this in person. So, we had some needs. We felt a little isolated out here. We came here, we were cranky, and you guys have been... Everybody's been great. So, a bunch of counselors came to one of our meetings. The city's been great. Shaun has been terrific in terms of setting up a group. These guys have been terrific involving us in all of the things. We have a great relationship with the police, so this is a good job. Thank you. We're always going to ask for more, and we're always going to want it faster, and you're going to hear more of us, but we really do appreciate all the hard work that everybody's putting in and saying, "Hey, we care about you too, even though you're over hidden behind UMass." So, that's all I really wanted to say.
We now know where you are, so...
Renaissance on the River. Thank you so much. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? No. I need a motion to accept and place in file by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Elliott. Next, we have communications from the City Manager. Appoint Said Hassan, MD, PhD, as Associate Paulette Memorial Library Trustee. I need a motion to adopt.
So move.
Counsel Mercia, second by Counsel Malanazo. Mr. Said, Dr. Said.
Dr. Hassan is here.
Hi there. Yeah, my name is Dr. Hassan. Dr. Said Hassan. You can call me Dr. Said. It's a little bit easier, okay? So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, and in particular, Madam Manager, for accepting my application to be part of the Paulette Memorial Library Board of Trustees. And I'm looking forward to taking part and hopefully look at how we can bring the library to the 21st century, okay? Looking at new technologies that can better enable more information so it gets out to local residents. So, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you again. Thanks.
Thank you for your service. Roll call. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Eight yeses. Next, we have orders from the City Manager. Orders, 60-day trial. Waives a full reading, the second reading by title. As soon to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, continuing Section 266-6, thereof entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations, Temporary Traffic Regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Malanazo. Roll call. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Eight yeses. Next, we have orders from the City Manager. Orders, 60-day trial. Waives a full reading, the second reading by title. As soon to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, continuing Section 266-6, thereof entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations, Temporary Traffic Regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Leahy. Question?
Question. Either you or the director, can you just explain? The second one's pretty... What's the first one about?
The first one, this is over by the school. We did do... If you recall, this was from the residents across from the school on Victor Street who weren't able to park.
Okay.
What we had done previously was under a statute that said it was during certain hours, and this is just making it permanent, seven days a week. That was what after it was instituted. It's on one side of Victor Street. And so, this is to clarify. There was some confusion. So, this is to clarify what the residents were asking for and I think what we thought we were doing at the time, so...
Okay. And then, the stop sign on Glenwood, that's the right side of the street, then?
Natasha is here.
Yes, Counselor. It's in front of Lata Learning.
Okay.
There's a...
Can we get one on the other side, too? That's my street, so just to make it even and...
That's a T-intersection on the...
Well, it's four, right?
Oh.
So...
Okay.
Could probably use a stop sign over there, too. If we're going to do a stop sign on the right, we might as well do one on the left because you cross over.
I will take a look. Yeah, I'll take a look. So, is it a turn and it... Because it...
Well, it's that triangles in the middle, yeah. So, you either go to the left or you go to the right.
Okay.
And...
Oh, you mean on that, on either side of the...
Yeah, just to balance it.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? Roll call. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Eight yeses. Next, we have another communication. City Manager requests out-of-state travel for developmental services. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Malanazo. Roll call. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Eight yeses. Next, we have another communication. City Manager requests out-of-state travel for developmental services. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Malanazo. Roll call. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Eight yeses. Okay. Next, we have orders from the City Manager. Orders, 60-day trial. Waives a full reading, the second reading by title. As soon to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, continuing Section 266-6, thereof entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations, Temporary Traffic Regulations are hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Leahy. Question?
Question. Either you or the director, can you just explain? The second one's pretty... What's the first one about?
The first one, this is over by the school. We did do... If you recall, this was from the residents across from the school on Victor Street who weren't able to park.
Okay.
What we had done previously was under a statute that said it was during certain hours, and this is just making it permanent, seven days a week. That was what after it was instituted. It's on one side of Victor Street. And so, this is to clarify. There was some confusion. So, this is to clarify what the residents were asking for and I think what we thought we were doing at the time, so...
Okay. And then, the stop sign on Glenwood, that's the right side of the street, then?
Natasha is here.
Yes, Counselor. It's in front of Lata Learning.
Okay.
There's a...
Can we get one on the other side, too? That's my street, so just to make it even and...
That's a T-intersection on the...
Well, it's four, right?
Oh.
So...
Okay.
Could probably use a stop sign over there, too. If we're going to do a stop sign on the right, we might as well do one on the left because you cross over.
I will take a look. Yeah, I'll take a look. So, is it a turn and it... Because it...
Well, it's that triangles in the middle, yeah. So, you either go to the left or you go to the right.
Okay.
And...
Oh, you mean on that, on either side of the...
Yeah, just to balance it.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? Roll call. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Eight yeses. Next, we have Wire Inspector National Grid, Verizon, New England, request permission to relocate Jerio Polls at 493 Mucks. We need a motion to accept, adopt, accompany in order by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Mercia. And 5.2, Wire Inspector Crown Castle NG East LLC request permission to extend existing fiber network on Westford Street down Technology Drive. Need a motion to accept and adopt, accompany in order by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Finally, we have Wire Inspector National Grid request permission to install SCADA system to comply with latest safety standards at the intersection of Hale and Chunsford Street. I need a motion to accept and adopt, company in order by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Mercia. Next, we have petitions, claim to property damage. I need a motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation.
So move.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Malanazo. And finally, we have Ms. Lanis Nijambi Wawu request for reimbursement for towing. I need a motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation. We have speaker... I'll say petition will speak.
Hi. Hello. How is everyone doing tonight? Have a good night. It's not easy speaking in front of a crowd.
I know that.
It's never easy, but I'm advocating for Nijambi Wawu well because sometimes she gets emotional and we don't want her to, you know? So... And it is a situation that it affects us all as a whole, so on the day in question.
It's actually Sunday. I am Nijambi Elwawero, the lady, the mother, that did petition this. This actually did happen on Sunday, October 27th at 9:00 a.m., actually between 9:45 and 10:00 a.m. So, my family is getting ready to, preparing to go to church, and the towing company comes to the parking lot, and we see him and we tell him, "We are moving the automobile. We know we are not supposed to park here, and I know the property manager will throw the story off. You should have a parking ticket." And he knows because we have requested.
Excuse me. Please talk into the mic so we can make sure we hear you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure everybody can hear you.
Yes, sir. It's because I have a loud voice and I do not want to be...
That's fine.
Thank you, sir. So, as I do continue, we do tell the tow agent that we are moving because we are preparing to go to church. And this gentleman straight up looks at me and my... Because my son was in the house and my cousin, and he says, "I do not care. That is how I make my money." And I tell him, "Sir, please, we are moving, and when we come back, we'll not park there. And more so, coming Friday, we are getting a ticket, so we just do not have the money right now to purchase the ticket. So, that the sticker, we can park at the parking lot." And one of the groundsman does live there in one of those units. My cousin ran to him, knocked on his door, and he called him out, and he said, "Do come and speak to this gentleman." And the gentleman, he spoke to him and he said, "It is okay. The automobile is fine. It is safe to park there. We know where they live, and we know she's the owner." And he looked at us, and I don't know what he said to the gentleman, and then he came back, and I begged him again, and I said, "This is the only means of transportation for my son, and God forbid anything is to happen. I do not know what to do." And he looked at me, and he further on and went and said, "I do not care. This is how I make my money." So, sir, I really want to know, as a single mother, how do you expect me to travel? I further on Monday go to the towing, and I asked them for my automobile, and they tell me, "Ma'am, you cannot have the automobile. Lowell Police Department is holding your automobile." And I said, "That is fine. May I take my son's school belongings and my private belongings?" And he refuses. And I wonder, I've taken people to go take their belongings from the towing truck. Never have I have experienced such a thing, but I got to experience. Right now, as we speak, I have books there for my son. I have my paperwork for work, my spreadsheets. I had to call out on that Sunday. I have a text right here, so I am not making up a story. And I do remember this gentleman and I and one of our brothers, who is not present, we did approach you, and we asked for a meeting, and we asked, "We need to sit down and have So, I want to know what, why Lowell Police Department is holding my automobile. I really want to know, how do you expect me to be taking my son to school? I suffer every day looking for rides. I call people left and right, and all I get is excuses. That is why I have that automobile, because I do not want to be a burden to no one. So, now my son, do you know how my son goes to school? Do you know? Your children go to school, your grandchildren go to school, you do not worry about that, I do.
Counselor Elliott, question?
Do we have any answers to this? I mean, I think this is totally unacceptable that, okay, whether the vehicle was towed or not, but that she was not allowed to take her personal belongings out even thereafter. And this was 10:31, today's the 5th, that's five days of the vehicle.
I'm not sure where, we don't, all we have is the petition that is here.
Can I say, did you go to the police department? Did you go to the mayor's office or the manager's office to try to get some?
Well, we, I emailed, because I followed the instructions in order to get a meeting in front of the council members, you have to go on the.
No, I understand that, but I understand this process, but in the meantime, it just seems like we should have been able to intercede to get you.
We did come to the office and asked for a meeting directly. We met the mayor ourselves before, at the time when we scheduled a meeting. Because we did want to bring, present this issue to him before.
Where is the automobile now?
The last time I checked, it was in 26 Tanner Street.
Tanner Street.
Tanner?
Tanner Street.
So, it was a towing, it's in their lot?
I have no idea. They will not let me see it, they will not let me touch it.
So, we will, why don't we, you know, work with you right now and get as much information? This is, and where was it towed from?
272 Riverside Street.
Okay, on the street?
Okay, that's a problem property. That is a problem property. I was just at the PCC meeting last night, and so, there's some challenges going on over there.
Okay.
And just so you know, I just like to know, madam, that prior to that, so my automobile was towed on the 27th. I just need to highlight this, it was on the 27th.
Yeah.
When was your court date, the 22nd?
That's fine, so, Mr. Mayor, through you and the manager, can we?
On the 22nd, October 22nd, I was coming from Market Basket. This Market Basket is located on Fletcher Street, I would say. And I, I traveled from Fletcher Street with the same automobile. From Fletcher Street, I took a right turn onto Potucket Street, then I took a left turn on University Ave, and then I took a right turn on Riverside Street, four streets, while I was traveling from Market Basket. A UMass police officer was trailing me, and I have heard that UMass police officer, when you are within the judiciary, once, they can stop you at any time. And this UMass police, he did not activate no siren, he did not activate no lights, he just traced me four streets from Fletcher Street to Riverside Street. I just wanted you to know that.
Okay, that's good to know. I just want to get to the issue here.
Excuse me, allow me. We have a motion to refer this to the Law Department, but I'd like to add, refer this to the Law Department and the city manager.
Yeah, and if you, if you can.
Allow her to handle the situation.
Stand by, the assistant manager will talk to you right now and try and get as much information from you as well.
Okay, if I may just point out one thing, it all falls, because that's why we came to you, Mayor, the couple of weeks ago in order to get the meeting.
You wanted to go to the clerks.
Because it all falls under a diversity of citizenship, which for some reason, the Lowell courts and along with the policy enforcers, they seem to think that we're making that up, when we, we're only reading, this is, this is a Massachusetts general law. I had it.
No, we understand.
I had it.
So.
Certified and notified, and it says in their general law about foreign residency to the US to be able to travel on the streets. This is Massachusetts, we're not making this up. It's their words, the Commonwealth's words, so we're abiding by what Massachusetts is saying, but yet still, the courts refuse it, and the policy enforcers refuse it.
Excuse me.
But for some reason, it seems to only be within this realm of individuals. I don't know why, I'm not, I don't want to say any.
Sir, excuse me, here's the thing, we have the city manager and the, and the city solicitor's office will look at it. When you came to me, you asked about approaching the city clerk to bring this matter before us, and this matter's now before us, and I assure you, this, you're going to meet with the assistant city manager now.
Okay.
To get, you know, the.
Thank you.
All the steps, because you filed the right steps. You asked to go to the city manager, to the city clerk, to make sure that you could come before this group to make your presentation.
The solicitor is going to meet with you as well as the assistant city manager.
Counselor Kennedy, first, you have.
Yeah, just, where's the car now?
They still have it. They still have, they said, so they towed it on their own accord, and then after said Lowell, police got involved.
And so, when, how long has the car been there since this past Sunday and Sunday previous?
It was 27th of October.
27th, so the Sunday before.
Yes.
Okay, for all of that time.
Yes.
Did they tell you how much it was going to cost to get the car?
They refused to tell me that amount, and he did speak to me.
Yep, and according to that, I would like to be able to put it on the record to get me the FOIA, the FOIA Act of 5, section 5, 552, to be able to show me a contract between that agency to the property manager to see what general law does it say that they have the authority to be able to tow the vehicle whenever they want to, they please, because by law.
Sir, excuse me, sir, you have a petition to speak, but this is what we're allowing. We're establishing the process right now.
No, 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 thank you.
I understand, but the thing, but the thing is, you need to meet with the city manager, assistant city manager now to put all your points forward, and the thing is, you'll be assisted in the proper way of making sure that this is dealt with in a very realistic way, hopefully in a very favorable way. Counselor Mercia. Oh, sorry.
I just have one more question.
Yeah.
So, the, your car was towed from private property.
Yes.
So, the property manager called and probably, right?
We don't even know.
Well, somebody had to call the towing company.
It was just the only automobile in the parking lot.
Okay.
Yes.
And you were just parking there for a short amount of time?
Yeah, for just a short amount of time.
Like, how, what's a short amount of time?
Um, I was like, I spent the night there before, because my cousin had asked me for a ride, so I was there.
So, was there overnight?
Like, I would say it was overnight.
Yeah, okay, okay, thanks.
Counselor Mercia.
Is the situation when they took your car, besides the fact that it seemed wrong, is it the fact that you didn't have the money to take your car out of there?
No, ma'am, they didn't even, they wouldn't let me know how much.
Okay, so, we need the police department to figure out what's going on here. This seems not right, not right.
We're in the palm of the body of the deputy.
I thought, I thought it was because as a single mother, you didn't have the money, and while you didn't have the money, the cost was accumulating, but that wasn't it. It was towed, and you don't, you got no answers.
No answers.
And when someone follows you like that and they stop you, they should have told you, why did they stop you?
Yes, but.
Why did you do that to me?
Yes, but.
And you're not getting answers.
Well, the, the UMass police did not stop me, they just trailed you from Fletcher Street onto Riverside Street, and then five days later, my automobile was towed from.
Well, we should figure out what's going on here, and I think the city manager is going to do that along with the mayor, we're going to help you to get answers here, all right? Yes.
Customers, that's the purpose of the.
Yeah, that's right.
The motion, so I've added the city manager.
That's right.
To help investigate this matter and resolve this issue.
All right, that's fine.
So, the assistant manager and the solicitor will meet with you and get information from you right now.
Okay, darling.
Have a great evening, guys.
Thank you.
I just want to point out one thing, like, a question. Now, every, everything here is constitutional, everyone swears an oath to the Constitution as the mayor of Lowell, right? There's an oath to the Constitution along with the courts and the police, right?
But that's the process, we're, I mean, you're now taking part in that process.
I understand the process, but it's just, who is to be held accountable at the end of the day? When, after, everything is said and done, and we're still stuck where they have found us.
The city council is, we're accountable, the city manager, we're accountable.
Well, we will get the facts here and determine, you know, what the steps are.
Because it does stretch beyond.
So, you're going to be made, the city solicitor's purpose is to make you aware of the city's responsibilities, your responsibilities, and then the city manager, if an investigation needs to be held, she can inform the police to create the investig, do you know what I'm saying? In other words, all the steps that you're legally entitled to, you're going to be made aware of.
Okay.
That's the purpose.
But my question, Mr. Mayor, if this Lowell Police Department, who are detaining my automobile, are the same people doing the investigation, don't you think that is conflict of interest?
Mr. Mayor, could I please?
Yeah.
So, from the little bit we know, your car was towed from a private lot, that means the private owner likely, and we'll find out, ordered the tow, and the police are not holding it. It is a tow company on Tanner Street that's holding your car, so we will try and get the information for you.
Excuse me, allow me, no, just, no, excuse me, just allow me. The city manager's correct. What's happening, the police were not directly involved. As I said, it was.
Excuse me, according to Massachusetts general laws, they have to fax, they have to fax some.
No, excuse me.
Excuse me, hold on, I have to address this.
No.
Point of order, point of order.
Point of order. You, you just not, you cannot just speak out without permission, okay? Both of us, we have to follow a set of rules.
Okay.
Okay, this is what the city council has set up. Your rights are going to be protected. You're now, I mean, you, you can go on and say a lot of things. The police department did not tow your car.
I just want to leave that on the record.
Okay, but the thing is, we're going on the record to ensure that you meet with the city manager's assistant and the lawyer for the city to sit down and discuss all of your rights. And by law, they have to make you aware of your rights.
Thank you.
All right? So, there's not going to be anything subjective here, it's going to be what you're entitled to, and if the city manager determines an investigation is necessary for her to get further information, that's what will happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want you to make sure that you're aware of that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I need a motion to refer to the Law Department and City Manager for report and recommendation by Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Mercia. Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Counselor Elliott, request city manager to invite new management company to present six months' report regarding auditorium activity. You need a second?
Second.
Counselor Noon, Counselor Elliott.
Motion speaks for itself.
Motion.
Could I just, on the motion, if I could?
Yep.
I don't know if the mayor of the motion objected, I'm, I'm curious as to whether